Like to call to order the Charter Township of Oxford Planning Commission Regular Meeting Agenda, Thursday, November 10th, 2016. And before you rise, I want you to think about three things while we pay our respects to the flag. Seventy-three percent voter turnout in Oxford. Fifty-seven percent in the country. Hundred and thirty-three million people voted, uh, registered vote. Fifty-seven percent of registered voters voted. Hundred and thirty-three million votes cast. If that doesn't make you proud to be an American, I don't know what will. So it's fair respects to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary, please note the roll.
Good move.
Approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the Planning Commission Regular Meeting of November 10th, 2016.
I'm not supporting. What did I say?
Not that it's support.
Been moved by Curtis, supported by Mr. Young. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Approval of minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the regular Planning Commission Meeting Minutes for October 12th, 2016.
There's support?
Support.
All right. One correction, that should read October 13th.
I'll amend my motion.
Free support.
Been moved by Curtis, supported by Mr. Young. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Public comments on items not, uh, items not scheduled for public hearing or on this agenda? Anybody in the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on. Commissioners' comments. Mr. Curtis?
Um, I have none.
Mr. Young?
None.
I have none.
Mr. Hunwick?
I have none.
Mr. Spiz?
I have none.
Okay. The Chair would like to thank those that ran in this election and were successful in securing your continued seats. We appreciate your dedication to our municipalities around here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Uh, item eight, I look for a motion to open a public hearing for the proposed special land use of the Phil Station propane dispenser for small cylinders on North Oxford Road. So moved. Support. Been moved by Mr. Curtis, supported by Mr. Spiz. Is there any discussion of that motion? Seeing none. All those, uh, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Seeing none, we will move on. Wow. I'm having a tough time tonight. Ah, anybody in the public wishing to speak on this? You'll have your chance. You'll have your chance. You're, I'm assuming you're the applicant, right? Yeah. I see none out there. Let's close the public hearing. So moved. Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. We'll close the public hearing. Unfinished business. Item 9A, amended final site plan. What?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Amended final site plan, evaluate parking, located west side M24. This is known as the Legacy Center. Here's the applicant here.
Yes.
Sir.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good afternoon. Or evening.
Good morning, afternoon, evening.
Morning somewhere.
Uh, go Trump. We have a great president. So, uh, first of all, you know, I appreciate your patience with me. I'm new at this process and, you know, uh, I know that we've gone through a number of iterations, so hopefully we have it right this time. So, uh, maybe the best way to approach this is to go through, um, you know, Matt's overview, Carlisle Wharton, and just focus on, you know, what we're asking for as far as some of the, um, variances. I don't know how you'd like to proceed.
Well, usually, usually what we do is we allow you to speak on the project for a little bit, and then we roll into the consultants' letters.
Okay.
Then we roll into commissioners' questions and answer period with you.
Okay.
And then we will come up with a motion from that point.
So I'll just follow the consultant's letter, maybe, just to keep it simple.
I, I think we all know, uh, you know, are very familiar with this, so I don't think you have to give an overview. I'm good with that.
Good.
And we can roll right into consultants' letters, and we can take them one by one.
Sounds good.
So, Matt, we'll start with the Carlisle Wharton, uh...
Sure.
Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so I, the, I want to kind of group my comments into three basic categories. The first is regarding curbing. The second is landscaping. And the third, which is the biggie, in my opinion, is related to parking counts. So, for curbing, uh, the applicant requested a waiver. However, the zoning ordinance does not permit the Planning Commission to grant a waiver. The applicant was requesting a waiver of the curbing of the landscaped islands. Now, because the zoning ordinance doesn't have a, an explicit requirement for islands, this is kind of a happy middle ground. What they're proposing, they're proposing some islands on the, I believe, the southern side of the site adjacent to the Lapeer entrance, uh, as well as curbing around a portion of the perimeter. Now, the applicant is requesting the, the waiver, so to speak, because of the sheet flow of the stormwater. That curbing may inhibit the stormwater from, from flowing down to the, I believe it's the western side of the site there.
That's correct.
Um, now, we only had one comment regarding that. We believe that the curbing that is proposed is a big improvement from the no-curbing, which was shown on the previous plan. However, looking at it again, we do feel like two curbed islands on the southern side, directly to the south of the main entrance, where drop-off and pickup may be taking place. That may help with the circulation and, as well as the pedestrian safety. So we do strongly recommend adding the two curbed islands there. However, the, the other areas, uh, that the hash marks seemed appropriate. So that was our comments regarding curbing. Now, for landscaping, the applicants are requesting two different waivers. Uh, the first is a waiver from the lands, the requirement of landscaping adjacent to roads. That's Section 7.4B. Uh, the existing building and the existing drive along Lapeer is right up against the right-of-way, so it is not feasible, in our opinion, to have a landscaped buffer there. So we feel that this waiver request is, is reasonable. Now, the second waiver, landscaping waiver, was with regard to the green belt on the southern side of the property. Section 7.4D requires a twenty-four, twenty-foot green belt on all side and rear lot lines. The property directly, or the existing parking lot directly abuts the McDonald's property to the south. So, once again, there's not really this opportunity to create a new green belt. So we, again, we find this waiver to be reasonable. So that's the first two waivers. Now, the third one is with regard to parking, and this is the, the big one. The applicant is requesting a waiver of Section 8.6 of the zoning ordinance, which is the numerical parking requirements. The applicant did provide a pretty detailed parking study, you know, of existing businesses, their peak hours, their number of employees, and their number of customers. We went a little bit further and analyzed, at the very back of the review, we did a parking analysis, which analyzed the peak hours based on the different peak demands throughout the day. And we came up with, uh, at one time, the most amount of parking, uh, demand there is is 413 spaces. The applicant is providing 426 spaces, so it does technically meet our peak hour demand study. Therefore, the request for the parking waiver is reasonable. We do ask, however, that the Planning Commission be aware that the uses inside the building are gonna most likely change, which means there's gonna be different demands, different parking demands. So we ask that the applicant, if, if it's possible, provide, you know, analysis of the future of the, of the project here, the Legacy Center. Is there an area where you're planning on having a future parking spaces, which is known as like a land-banked parking area for future parking spaces? The Planning Commission just needs to be proactive with this to make sure that there's not a problem with future uses that come in. So, right now, we do believe the three waivers are reasonable. Once again, the parking, though, is, is the big issue.
Matt, in your opinion, what would that land bank, how many spaces would, should that be?
Uh, there's, I really don't have a count right now, because, again, it depends on the future uses. It's more of making sure that there's adequate space on the site, whether it's on the northern part. I know that there's, there may be some existing topographic issues and some, uh, existing landscaping that may have to be removed to accommodate a new parking area. But it's, you know, the peak hour demand, it's pretty tight. We have, I think, a, a buffer of about ten, ten or so spaces between what they're providing, what our analysis accounted for.
Okay. Can I make a comment? So, a couple of things. Uh, one, and, we made an error in the analysis. One of our tenant slash uses was counted twice. There's an arcade and a laser tag, which is actually the same space.
Yeah.
So, twenty spots. But also, we projected, so this wasn't just current tenants. In our analysis, we projected future use for the rest of the building. So...
Saw that.
Um, you know, I don't exactly know what the projections will be, you know, outside of what I'm guesstimating, but I think it's pretty reasonable. Even on a Saturday, we don't even touch, you know, the back two lots. You know, there's, there's parking in the main lot. You'll see some, you know, people park out front, but...
Yeah.
Um, we're not even, there's another 200 spots in the back that nobody's ever parking in.
Okay.
And that, and my comment was really just for the Planning Commission, just, just be aware that the uses may change. You know, we're all for reducing the amount of impervious surface and making sure that, um, we're not treat, we're not ma, making the requirement the, the most demand, you know, for, for a store. You know, that would be Christmas, you know, or Black Friday or something. So, we want to make sure that the peak demand is accounted for, but at the same time, we do want to do what we can to reduce impervious service if it's reasonable.
I got it. Jack?
You didn't, did you count the, the gravelled area north and then behind the building?
No.
I mean, in future use...
You can't count gravel.
I... My question was, did you? The answer was no. I understand you can't. But should a bank of parking be available, that gravelled area could be paved and in reserve, you would have approximately 200 spaces back there?
I don't know what that estimate is, but...
I mean, there's a lot.
It's probably north of 100 spots in that, in that back area.
And that wasn't included with the parking?
No.
And that's what we were talking with the land bank parking. If there's extra space available, just make sure that it's reserved for future parking areas if needed.
Right. And, and I don't, there's no, um, I can't see in a reasonable, that we would use that for any other purpose around the north. So in the future, if we needed to pave that and create additional parking, you know, that's reasonable.
Well, what, what, what land bank parking does on an approved site plan is if we see people parking all over the place and in grass and stuff, we can come and, and, and write you a violation, and then you'll have to peer back for us, to us, and say, "Okay, I'm gonna pave this area now. Here's my islands, here's my plan for it," and we move forward in that direction. It gives us a vehicle to say to you that, "Hey, you had this agreement with us..."
Right.
"...you know, in the site plan, in case, that's why we land banked it, in case, you know, this, um, business blows up and we have, you know, uh, 600 people need it, or 600 parking spaces need it. You have it available." That's all that means.
Yeah, and my preference really isn't to put that in a land bank, but...
Land bank only means not doing the work.
Right.
Just a dotted line that's a, and shows that you can put X amount of spaces in there.
Potential.
Potential in that area, and if you need them, I think without us even telling you to pave it, you're gonna put them in because you want people there.
Sure.
Okay. All right. So that answers that. All right. What else did you?
Yeah, so those are the three waivers. We did have some other comments, um, just about the revised plan. They, they did modify the safety path location, so it's in a much better location relative to the McDonald's safety path to the north. We still need M-dot approval...
Right.
...for that. Update on the, the signs, location and areas have been approved by the ZBA. So that's been taken care of. Uh, the fire chief had a comment regarding the dumpster enclosure. I know that it was currently in the building. His, his review letter stated that it had to be located outside of the building.
We, we moved the dumpster.
Okay.
On the plan, it's located outside the building.
Okay.
He actually...
Just wanted to make sure.
He approves the location as well.
Yeah. So we'll, we will need, uh, eventually, you know, and this can be contingent upon the approval, a details of the enclosure that it's gonna be located in.
And the enclosure will, you know, you can indicate that we would, uh, do that according to Section 2.0 Dumpster Enclosure, whatever, or 6.20.
Our standards, you'll meet our standards.
We'll meet your standards for that dumpster enclosure.
Yeah, so other than that, it was really just deferring to the fire chief for his comments. It's the, the three waivers, uh, the M-dot approval for the safety path, as well as the dumpster enclosure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, Mr. Sharp?
Uh, just real briefly, um, no sanitary sewer improvements, no water improvements with regards to this project. The storm sewer is Mr. Lauterstader indicated. It's a, uh, it sheet drains across the parking lot. They are proposing to put in a minor swale on the west side of the parking lot. So, again, supporting that waiver or variance from the curbing would, would certainly be warranted. Um, as far as the pavements go, we had a couple of items about the curbing themselves, and I think, I think Matt covered it fairly well, so I won't rehash those. And, um, the safety path, too. Um, he commented that we liked the, the new alignment of the safety path itself. So, other than that, we have, uh, we have no comments.
All right. On the, on the curbing, where are you saying that deferment of the curb can happen? Are you talking along the west line of the parking lot you're okay with, 'cause that's where it sheet drains?
Correct.
But north drive, south line should have curbing?
North drive.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, not north.
South.
No. East along M24? And south along McDonald's property should have curbing?
Curbing already exists along McDonald's, but further to the south you're talking about?
Yes.
Yes.
And there's none on the north of M24, along M24, right?
There is none along M24.
And that, that wouldn't impede sheet draining, 'cause that climbs up the hill, right?
But it actually drains off their parking lot into a, uh, swale that they created.
Okay.
Um, and you're talking from the building sheet draining to the east towards M24?
I thought there was catch basins along there, but it sheet drains to a swale?
It sheet drains to a swale that was created when they paved that parking lot, so putting curbing along there would impede the flow out to that drainage swale as well. So, that was not shown on their plan, and we have no objections to no curbing being there. They can...
Okay.
It can be without curbing.
All right.
And then, uh, just to, to tag on to the parking on the north side there, you know, I would think that the way that this project is developing, everything's on the south side right now. So, as you're getting new tenants in there, they're gonna want to be on the north side, and so eventually, I would think they would want to pave that north side, 'cause that's a long building. I don't know if people are gonna want to park down by the McDonald's entrance and walk all the way through there.
And walk 350 feet?
You know, as we grow...
Right.
You know, and depending on the needs, we, we don't really know what will happen in that area, you know, how, how that space will be used and, you know, it...
So it's just, uh, again, just bringing it to your attention, I don't know if it's something that needs to be shown on a, on a site plan right now, just so that it's addressed in the future and they don't have to come back for it. Um, I mean, it's, it's pretty rough up there. It's a lot of concrete's broken up, some vicious gravel and things. So, just for your consideration, just something to think about.
Okay. Do you have the fire chief's letter in front of you?
Um, I have his older letter. We didn't get a copy of his most recent letter.
I'd like to read off the...
Why don't you? Please.
Let me grab it. Okay, this is, uh, Chief Schultz's letter dated August 10th, 2016. Uh, he has the following comments. It's one, "There shall be no, uh, no parking fire lane signs posted along the south side of the building." Two, "There shall be no parking fire lane signs posted along the east side of the building." Three, "The parking and direction of traffic is not shown on the plan for the area on the east side of the building along Lapeer. This area needs to be clearly defined." Four, "The areas in front of the Egress stores shall be painted on the pavement, uh, no parking and cross-hatched." Five, "Fire hydrants shall have bollards placed to protect them from being damaged." Six, "Dumpsters are not to be located inside of the building." Uh, seven, "Dumpsters shall be located at least 10 feet from the building." And eight, "A fire department connection shall be installed at the north end of the building. This was shown on the previous plans submitted for the fire suppression line to Stony Lake Drive."
We've, we've addressed all of those issues in this plan.
Yeah, this might be the previous letter that...
It's a, it's an older letter.
Yeah.
We actually called Chief Pete. He had asked two questions and said he didn't have any other adjustments to it, but I do have a copy of that letter. So you'll see that all those are addressed in our current plan, and also, um, the only thing that we haven't done yet is the bollards, which we're aware of.
When you say current plan, the plan we have submitted to us or the plan you have in your hands?
The plan that we have submitted to you.
So why do we have a different plan than what Pete reviewed?
He may not have provided a, a new letter. This is just the one that I had received from, dated August 10th.
Oh, August. He did not do a...
It was given up.
He did not do a new review. All right. Okay. All right?
Conversation with him was, it was acceptable.
All right. Uh, since we've gone through all the letters, commissioners' comments?
I, you probably answered part of the question earlier, but how do you, how was enforcement made with, uh, the parking in the land bank? If, um, what, what forces him or any applicant that wants this to...
Zoning enforcement officer would write a, would write a citation if they were parking anywhere other than on the paved areas.
So then, we can force him to, just for that reason? Does that have to happen more than once, or...
I, I don't think so. I think, once it's identified that they're parking in areas that, uh, are not paved or permitted parking, then we can force him to do that. But I think as a good businessman and trying to keep people in there, he'd be crazy not to pave it, so... He doesn't want people walking in mud and tracking in the building, I'm sure, broken concrete, lawsuits, all that kind of stuff, right?
Well, and the reality is that, you know, if you just use our track record, what we've done so far, we want to make sure that the building is nice and that people have appropriate access and, um, so, but we are doing it step by step.
Sir?
Question slash comment to curbing. On the east side, that's along M24, today, there is a swale there.
That's correct.
And where you paved. My concern with not putting curbing there is, is there an opportunity or ability for somebody to drive off and get stuck or go down into that? 'Cause a lot of people drive up and down that today, and the access to the den is right there. So there's a lot of people moving in and out of there.
Play with Play-Doh.
Is curbing, and I don't know how to solve it, 'cause I know it's a drain, is flow for water going that direction, but we need it for...
Does curbing help protect traffic flow of people in that area?
Yep.
So, what's the best way to solve it?
It does, and you can, you can leave tapered edges at intervals so that the water at the low points that collect along, that run along the curb and then at the, you know, at the, uh, what do you want to call that? A V-section maybe of the, of the high part of the curb, so that the water can leach into the swale?
You could, as long as the parking lot, you know, was, you know, up 1%, down 1%, up 1%, down 1%, then it would kind of flow to those...
Right.
...low points. But I don't know that this driveway is like that. I think it was paved so that everything, it just matches at the building and then just sheet drains straight across. I don't know that it's channelized in any one location.
It's dangerous. What we came up with before was that water was collecting on that road and it was ice.
Right. I agree with that, too.
And so, and so we pitched that road and put a swale so it drains properly, so it's safe. We haven't had any issues with people, you know, driving off into the, the swale. But we really do need it for drainage. So, and, and I don't own the property.
It's M-dot, right?
It's, it's an M-dot, so I can't put a curb on M-dot property. But for safety reasons, number one, you know, to have water collect and start to push in a different direction, you know, it was designed with a pitch just to move into that swale.
Would you recommend some landscaping down through there, or some low bushes or something? He can put that in M-dot right away, with their approval, of course.
I can't do that as well. We can't put bushes next.
Can't do that. Matt, can he, can, I know we...
You'd, I think you'd have to get approval for it.
Right. I know you'd have to get approval, but...
They don't want any bushes or shrubs on their property.
The views or anything like that.
I think that by putting bushes or shrubs in there, it would prohibit any drainage. You know, they have the swale in there and it could block some of the drainage if it's trying to get to a particular location to drain out. I'm not quite sure...
The last thing I want to do is cause ice on there by putting anything else.
I agree. I don't know necessarily how to fix it, but I, I personally see a potential issue. You know, volumes in a winter are gonna pick up through that area.
It's a pretty wide...
Right.
It's a pretty wide space.
Multiple times, so...
And...
Just, every time I drive down there, I'm like, just waiting for the time when somebody's gonna drive down.
I'm sure someone at some point will need to be pulled out of there, but like, in any area, things happen. But, um, it hasn't been an issue.
Anybody else got any comments before I start? Okay. I definitely want the islands curbed, um, on the south side.
In the front of the, in the front of the entrance?
Yeah, I think that only makes sense for safety.
I'm happy to do that.
The two?
Yeah.
Yeah, just the two. Not the big one with the bollards that separate the high-low parking lot? That, that one doesn't, that doesn't need to be done with, 'cause of the bollards there?
But the two in front of the south entrance?
The two little ones by the, that'll just help maintain good traffic flow. It'll be a safe, uh, safer environment so people aren't flying through there, um...
I'm okay with that.
Um, is there, is there irrigation shown on the plan?
Yeah, which entrance?
Those two islands right there.
These two? Which two are you talking about?
Yeah.
Not this one?
No, I'm okay with the two, the two bigger, long ones by the entrances. Yeah, not that one.
Right at the east side?
Yes.
So these two?
Yes.
Not the two on the south?
Not those two, no.
We have irrigation in the landscape areas. And the islands, we're just going to put stone in there. They won't be.
But you've got trees in there that you've got to keep alive, right?
The landscape areas we will.
Okay.
But the, like what you just recommended, you know, they won't be landscaped. We'll just put stone in there for safety, but we've already met the landscape requirements.
All right, well, kind of. That's my next one.
Okay.
You're asking for a waiver on the south green belt and the, I wrote 7.4B. I didn't catch what green belt that was.
7.4B is the waiver or is the requirement for landscaping adjacent to roads.
Okay.
7.4D is the green belt requirement.
Right, right, okay. So that's a lot of linear footage of landscaping that should be put in, but you can't because it's M dot, right?
Yeah, and we, based on the calculations, I think the minimum requirement is 8,000 something. We have 13,000, how much? We have 11,000 of landscaping. So we meet the minimum requirements by 2,000 square feet.
Of area.
Of area.
No, no, I'm talking.
I understand what you're saying.
I'm talking trees and bushes and things. So my proposal back to you is since you can't put them in those two areas, I'd like to see those on Stony Lake Drive as a buffer between the condos and your development.
Well, we've proposed in our landscape plan.
I see them there.
That we're going to add some trees.
I see that.
So it, but it's a pretty good buffer.
I know that. But I think that since you're getting such a large waiver from the linear footage in the front and the side, that I'd like to see more.
How many more trees would you like to see? Five more trees?
I'd like to see it on a plan. That's what I would like because I don't, I know you have a good landscape architect, but I just think down to the, about where that water main is down in there where I think that's a water main, isn't it?
Do you want to pull up the? Because I'd like to resolve it tonight if we can, you know, just to.
I don't have it. Oh, you can.
We have it.
I don't have my laptop. I don't know if that'll reach.
We actually were very, there's a lot of trees along that line. And then we took the time to actually put, I don't know how many more trees, 10 more trees. And they also have a buffer. Do you guys all have a copy of this?
He doesn't own that property out there either to Stony Lake Drive.
No, but he owns property to, almost to Stony Lake Drive.
Are these existing?
No, he doesn't own all the way to it. I know, but I want him to screen from that development.
But we, we have in this plan, I think we've put.
I got it, we got it up on the wall, right? Can you see it here?
Yeah. So from the top all the way to the bottom, we proposed putting, I think there's another 15 trees. You got to scroll down a little bit. He does, he just.
Right.
Yeah, that's the right one.
Yep. Oh, no, that isn't the right one.
It's the one we've got.
That's the landscape plan we have.
I have the one we submitted in our packet, but I don't.
What's the bottom, what's the sheet number in the bottom right-hand corner of that? So we can put this to bed whether we've got the.
June 3rd.
Oh, Jesus. Last revised is 10-10-2016. That's the one we have. Down in the bottom. Right above the scale. There's four revision dates to the original June 3rd. That's a PDF.
We have the same one, but we have different images.
Do you have your hard copy as well or no?
Do you have a hard copy?
Who's has it on it?
If they were all submitted, you should all submit.
See, that's exactly what I'm talking about, what you have on that plan.
Yeah.
That I don't see.
Hard copy of this.
Yeah, it's in the hard copy. I don't know why it's not in the PDF.
And is this the same date? Yeah, 10-10. That's exactly what I'm talking about. Okay.
So we've added.
Not on my plan. Okay, that's good. That's what I want, that's what I wanted to see. That's all I was looking for. Okay, if you got them there, good.
We anticipated that. For the first time.
I wonder how you knew that.
20 meetings.
Okay. So parking, this is always a stickler in our, in our business because number one, we don't like seas of asphalt. We want to keep the minimum amount of parking possible, but we also want our community to be able to park on a nice, clean asphalt that you're going to maintain through the winter months and salted and all that stuff.
Right.
And, you know, I'm a fan of this development and I think it's, my opinion is that it's going to take off and it's going to do well. I would prefer that we have this discussion and close this tonight about land banked parking. And my recommendation, and I wrote a number down of 150 spaces based on the 426 and just doing some math that I've done before and looking at his calculations that he provided and then looking at your calculations that got up to six. 613 or 616. So I'm compromising the middle and saying 575 spaces. If we could just land bank that up in that north end of the building and around the, the south side of the north portion of there. Because I think you're, you're going to need them. You're going to need them soon.
So.
Sooner than later.
I guess what I want to do is, you know, if someone decides to park on the grass, you know, and I get a ticket, I don't want it to trigger. I mean, there's plenty of parking for them to park so we can redirect our people.
Well.
I don't want to be in a situation where.
One car isn't going to cause it.
Yeah.
But if you have an event there, let's say senior all-night party by chance, you might have one of those there. I don't know.
Right.
Right?
Sure.
I can see a lot of kids, a lot of volunteers, a lot of people where you would occupy more than the 426 spaces you have for a senior all-night party.
Yeah, you know. We've got 250 kids and, and plus some adults and stuff like that.
100 adults.
But it's in the middle of the night, so there's no one else there. But I get your point, you know, that, that we may have huge community event there that draws a ton of traffic.
Right.
It could be any number of things that we could do that will drive a lot of traffic, which is good for everybody.
Which is your goal?
Yeah, of course it is.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't have anything in that north side. You know, I don't have anything projected to build in the north side that is reserved for potential parking. I just don't want to be in a situation where tomorrow we wave a wand and, you know, now I have to spend a quarter million dollars on parking that I don't quite need yet.
That's not going to happen, but you know, an event like the ones I just mentioned.
Sure.
Where you've got 50 or 100 cars parked around that north end on that gravel all trying to get in there because the other lot is full.
Right.
That's going to trigger that we need to get this done at some point in time.
Sure.
All right? So it's not a, it's, it's not a, you know, a trump card that Oxford Township throws down and says, hey, we saw one car in the grass.
Right.
Pave that and spend a quarter million dollars in your words. It's not what this is about. It's more about protecting because we want to limit the parking. We get that. We're with you on it. But we also want to have a vehicle that says, man, when you grow on that north end.
That's reserved for parking.
It's reserved for parking. That's all it's for. That's all it can be used for. And when it's time, you'll know when it's time. We won't have to tell you.
Sure.
Okay?
Can I ask you a question a different way? Would the applicant be willing to dotted line?
It's all I'm asking.
North and west side that states future parking should be if needed or required?
Sure.
Does that meet your?
Yeah, absolutely. That's all we're looking for.
Yeah. It's logical, you know, what we're trying to accomplish, so.
I think it's, it's almost done for you, right? You know, you just got to tear up, tear up some concrete and straighten out some gravel and put paving down on top of it. It's almost.
I mean, half of it is paved already.
Right.
We just didn't count it as parking.
I, I just think it's going to get used in a, in a, in a short period of time. That's all. I just want to make sure we got the, you're prepared for it and we understand it and we're not driving on somebody else's lawn or parking up in the M dot right away.
I understand.
Crazy things, all right? Okay. That's it. Other than the, you got all the fire chief's concerns, I'm, I'm good. Anybody got anything else?
I move that the planning commission grants amended final site plan approval for the Legacy Center, parcel number 04-22-101-003. Zone C 2, general commercial. Applicant Christian Mills, 154 Grove Street, Lake Orion, Michigan, 48362. This approval is based on the following conditions. Number one, a parking waiver from section 8.6 reducing the number of required parking spaces to 426. Number two, a landscape waiver, section 7.4. B for landscaping adjacent to LaPierre Road. Number three, a landscape waiver, section 7.4. D for south green belt requirement. Number four is install curbing on two islands on south side of parking lot by front entrance. Number five, land banking of the western and northern portions now in gravel for future parking. And number six, meet the fire chief's requirement of dumpster on outside of building. End of motion.
Is there support for that motion? It's been moved by Curtis, supported by Spiz for discussion.
Do you want to put a number on that part? Left it for future parking. You mentioned 150 or 100.
We don't know what we can get in there.
He mentioned a number he was looking for. That's why I'm asking.
Do you want a number on that land banking? You don't?
I don't. Nope.
Let him.
It's too hard to configure it right now on the table.
Right, let him, let him put in what he needs to put in, when and what, what will be required so that they're not parking on grass, right?
Okay.
I'm good with that. And meet everybody else's? Nope, I got one item, Jack.
I have one.
What's that? Landscaping per the hard copy, not the PDF in our file?
Uh, landscaping.
Wait a minute.
Okay.
Where's one more? You want to do them both at the same time?
Let me write them down.
Okay, very good. Thanks.
Landscaping, uh, as shown on hard copy.
Not PDF in our file. That's weird.
Yeah, it's the same date. Hard for the course, though.
What's your second one? What's your, what's your second one, Mike?
Oh, I'm going to go back to my, my first question about the curbing on that east side. Correct me if, actually, I'm looking for input because I don't remember what exactly they're. Going from memory, I think it goes asphalt, then it actually has like a six-inch drop, then it goes to soil.
That's correct.
Is there any intent to bring that so it's smooth, a smooth transition with the, with the flow down? Or is there always going to be that six-inch drop right off asphalt into soil?
We need the swale to.
I know you need a swale, but I'm saying if you have this, then it goes to soil and it drops off into the swale versus.
He's looking for fill off that edge just so people aren't dropping off.
Yeah, you drop off right now if I'm going from memory.
Yeah, I, I think in different areas of that, it's a, it's different. But for the most part, yes, it moves from the road into.
It's just, I'm not an asphalt expert or a soil expert, but usually next to the asphalt.
He is?
You would have a smooth transition to soil so you don't break off the edges of the asphalt or just more from.
You just want it backfilled. So you want the soil, well, Mr. Spiz, again, now you want the asphalt and then you want the.
We don't want erosion for the.
Dropping down into the dish. So if it drops off suddenly right now and you can see four or six inches of asphalt, you know, right on the edge there, it just needs to be filled in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can put a clause in here that says backfill east edge of asphalt.
Okay. Angle slope east. With my concern.
East asphalt to soil to eliminate drop off. There you go. That'll do it.
Okay, I'll amend my motion to include landscaping as shown on hard copy print, but not on PDF. And number eight, angle slope east asphalt to soil to eliminate drop off.
Yeah, I mean, I, it's not a really appropriate. Okay, sorry.
I need, I need, I need reamended motion.
Oh, okay, I had another, I re-support, yes.
Okay. It's been moved by Mr. Curtis, supported by Mr. Spiz, okay? Normally, I don't let anybody talk when we got a motion on the floor, but go ahead.
Well, we're going to maintain that to make sure that the asphalt is taken care of, you know, to change the swale or.
Not asking that. We just want you to back up the edge of the asphalt.
Yeah, of course.
You're going like this right now. All I want you to do is put some dirt.
Just put a little, okay.
Okay.
Dirt, stone, something like that.
Right, something to back up that edge so people aren't falling off and tearing and breaking the edge off or hurting their car.
Got it.
You know, cars don't have much ground clearance anymore, right?
Right, okay, fair enough.
I haven't any trouble, but I hear about it. From 29 years of marriage.
Isn't there more of an issue than in the?
Shouldn't drive like that.
In the dumpster for the fire department? He's just focusing on the dumpster.
That's a good point. Jack, do you want to add that motion in that, that the standards of the Oxford Township dumpster enclosure will be met and administratively approved?
Did you hear my motion?
He asked, I didn't.
No, I'm seeing additional issues that were on that letter.
No, he's already got them recommended, he's already got them cleaned up. The dumpster is the only one.
It's all done.
The only, only the enclosure.
All right, I'm just making sure that we're.
Meet the fire chief's requirement of dumpster on outside of building as shown on plan.
Matt?
That had, the, I believe the dumpster has already been moved. It's now just the enclosure that needs to be provided.
So it needs to meet township.
The fire chief requirement of dumpster on outside of building with enclosure. I will amend my motion.
Okay. We're not being critical, Jack. It's hard to make a motion.
I amend my support.
All right.
Thank you.
It's been, it's been re-amended and motion and re-supported again by Mr. Curtis. Deanna, are you clear on that motion?
I got it. I'll give it to her.
Okay. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Got your approval.
All right, thank you.
Good work, thank you.
Deanna, gentlemen, appreciate all your support in this.
We wish you great success. We really do.
Thank you.
It's only good for us if you are successful, right? Together?
Yeah.
All right. Item 10B, special land use store and lock fill station and propane dispenser. Doing business as North Oxford Store and Lock applicant. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Bruce Snoff and I live at 2400 Gardner Road in Oxford.
Okay, Bruce, what brings you here tonight?
I would like to be able to have a propane fill station on my storage site.
Okay. And by that, you have to get a special land use approval from this planning commission in order to do so.
That's what I've heard.
Okay.
When do you plan on putting that in? He said facetiously.
Yes.
When do you plan on putting it in?
I, I talked with Hamilton Propane that has put in several of them this year and they were to handle all the permitting for the process.
Yep.
I was told that the permits were secured and the work began. When we went to get our final inspection, we found out that not all the permits have been pulled and now I'm here.
Right. I, I don't think any of us are going to argue about the, whether it's there or not, right?
No, it's there.
How we know it's there?
Yeah.
That's not even a debate.
Nope.
Okay. Planning Commission.
Well, my question is, since it's been installed, has it been inspected and approved with final approval except for the special land use?
The only approval that we have not had is within the township for the electrical. The state has proved that. I think you had that in your packet, state inspection.
F, F U W or something, or something weird?
Lara.
That's it?
Yeah.
Yeah. We don't have electrical. It was, I remember the acronym.
Correct, the electricals.
Is the electrical permit pulled?
No, he wasn't allowed to pull the permit because of this process.
Right, okay. So on, and, so you can't dispense propane out of it right now because you don't have electrical to it?
There, there is no propane in the tank. Lara made us pull all the propane out of the tank and they have their tag on it and it's sealed.
Okay.
When we went to get an electrical permit to do the work, that's when we found out we had to go through this whole process.
So a condition of approval of the special land use is that they pull an electrical permit due.
That's not our business. But.
It's already there.
No. No, but what, what we can make our business is that this needs a site plan. So what we can do is we can make it conditional upon the approval of an administratively reviewed site plan.
So moved.
Which will take care of all of your.
Thank you.
That's, I was concerned, I just didn't want.
Yep.
I want the electrical pulled, I want it approved. And, and then we could say, yeah, okay, it's all done. Okay, it's there and it's good. Let's get it working.
Yep.
Mr. Sharp has a question.
So that will take, yes, Mr. Sharp.
There is a sketch of site plan per se in your packet.
I know.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I know, but it's.
We're cart, horse, cart, horse. I want to make sure the horse is in front of the cart.
Okay, so by making an administrative approval, I don't have to worry about all the ordinances not being enforced.
And him coming back.
Right. All that, right? So I can, we can just push it there and he'll make sure it happens. So I can, we can just push it there, and he'll make sure it happens, and then it goes to the building department, and they follow all the permitting process.
That's why I said, so moved.
That's what I thought you said.
For a second.
Okay?
Face to the finish.
I'll read it if you want.
Yeah, that would be better.
I move that the planning commission grants special land use approval to permit the placement of a fill station propane dispenser for small cylinders located at North Oxford Store and Lock, 499 North Oxford Road, a portion of parcel 04-22-200-005, zoned L1, light industrial for the following reasons. With administrative, approval is conditioned upon the administrative approval of the site plan by the zoning administrator official. Now I need a second.
Been moved by Mr. Curtis, supported by Mr. Young, is there any discussion in that You know, I know this is a technicality, Jack.
Yes.
And I hate to beat you up.
No, go ahead.
But you said, you said L1, I think you meant I1.
Light industrial.
But you did, but you did say light industrial.
Yeah, well, it's...
Do we have to correct that? It's a point I'm asking.
We can, and I'll correct it as, I'll amend it as motioned.
So it is a...
I1 light industrial.
Very good. Re-support?
Re-support.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any further discussion of the motion? Seeing none, roll call vote on special land use. Mr. Hunwick?
Yes.
You have to do the roll call vote, you're the secretary.
I forgot about that. Okay.
Burger's not here, so start Mr. Curtis.
I was going to start that, I have, can I just...
Oh, yeah, sir, go with that.
Mr. Spiz?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Hunwick, yes. Motion approved.
Thank you. You got your approval, very good.
Thank you.
Okay, good luck. Item 10B, adoption of the 2017 meeting schedule. This is what we do typically, is the two meetings a month, except for November and December. And again, we're going to start master plan the fourth Thursday of every month after the new year, is we're going to make sure it's on that agenda, we're going to try and keep that agenda light, but it'll always have a master plan update or something to do on it. Everybody good with that? Yes.
Yeah, that's fine, I have a question, though.
Go ahead.
On your second note, why does that meeting date have to be posted?
Which one?
For the ordinance, oh, I'm sorry. For the ordinance review subcommittee?
Why does the ordinance review subcommittee meet as needed? Why does that have to be posted?
The agenda has to be posted. That's all.
That's all? Okay.
The agenda has to be posted because it's not a set date, we're setting those dates.
Oh, otherwise, we'd have to put set dates to set the date. Okay, I got it, so the note in there takes care of it. Okay? When needed, as you can see, the last part will be, notice of meeting date will be posted at the Township Hall. Right? Because you're not going to, you guys may alter your dates, right?
Right.
Okay, so that's why that blanket statement says, we're not going to define the exact date you're going to meet right now, because you guys are probably going to alter those as you go. So we'll post them each time you guys do meet.
Okay.
All right?
Yeah. Well, to be honest with you, I'm not really good with it. What if we decide to meet the night or two before? What is the timing on that?
No, no. No, no.
I think it's actually...
We're not defining a date for you on the ordinance review subcommittee.
Technical.
Okay.
Which I have to...
We're putting a blanket statement that says notice of those meeting dates will be posted.
As long as you do it 24 hours, you're good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay?
Sure.
All right. Do we have to make a motion on that? Do we?
Adopt.
To adopt?
Yeah.
I need a motion to adopt.
Don't we have to recommend us and the Township Board approve this?
No. No, we approve it, we send it right, our approval goes to them.
Yeah, but they have to approve it. I know in the past, Mr. Ferrari used to bring it back, bring it up all the time while we meet twice a month, and I'm going from memory.
Yeah, but we still have to, it's our meeting, so we have to make a motion.
I understand we make a motion, but...
But I think they approve.
Don't we have to recommend approval?
No, we have to approve, it's our meeting.
It's the desk.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the meeting schedule.
So moved.
Of course.
Been moved and supported. Spiz moved, supported by Hunwick. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Violation report? Any comments? Chief shots, criticism? Acreage lot split? Mr. Spiz, Mr. Young, anything?
We did. We gave final approval for those three lots off of the venture lane.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
That included the railroad?
Yep.
Yeah, we cleaned up the paperwork and that got...
That was, we used to call that Jim Guy's property, right? Okay.
And...
All right?
Is that it?
That was it?
Yeah.
You got something coming up?
Not that I'm aware of.
Nothing submitted?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. I thought there was something submitted. Economic Development Subcommittee?
Well, as you know, Commissioner, we worked on a PowerPoint presentation to update potential investors in our community. It's a living document. We tested it, sent it out, we're making some changes and updating it. I would suggest that we'll meet one more time before the next planning commission meeting and have it finalized so we can show this committee what it's about.
So we'll meet first of December?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right? Perfect.
Oh, and...
Oh, wait, what is the date?
Under Economic Development Subcommittee, we do need automation alley articles. If someone can think of, that's the seventh.
Good.
A date that'll live in infamy.
Good, all right.
Automation alley articles expounding on the successes in Oxford, events in Oxford that are coming up, something new in Oxford that's of benefit to making our community or showing our community what it really is. If you get those ideas to me, I'll sit down, we'll talk about it in committee and get it off to our scribe.
Okay.
Thank you.
Point of clarification, it's November 30th.
No.
No. It'd be the...
First Wednesday.
First Wednesday of the month.
Oh, then the seventh.
Yep.
So I was right?
Well, I heard the first of December.
Happens a while, John, the first Wednesday of this.
Okay.
Be clear.
Gravel inspection, we do have, we didn't have time to get the package complete, we did do it on the 28th or 29th of October, whatever that Friday was. We also had OCTV up there filming. It'd be nice if OCT would put that on YouTube or something so we could see the, everybody could view it. Sometimes you guys put these planning commission meetings on YouTube, do you put?
We put all the planning commissions, we put all the meetings on YouTube, and thank you for the video footage, but this is actually going to go to our community access, but I will have a bill or a card that you guys can have.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So next, in December, we will have the full gravel inspection report. Ordnance Review Subcommittee. Mr. Hunwick, or Mr. Young, since Ms. Rosner is not here. When's the last time you guys had a meeting?
About two or three weeks ago. I requested another meeting, but haven't heard back from the chairman.
Okay, are we making ground on the low-hanging fruit items of, I'm going to call it the mat letter, the mat items that we need desperately to get cleaned up?
Not since the last time we met.
So two or three weeks ago, you guys haven't picked...
Since we reported out, we haven't met.
All right. We got to get going on that. You got time?
I didn't think so.
At this time of year, I don't.
All right.
I don't have any time either.
I know you don't. Then I don't have any time. Safety Path and Maintenance Committee?
Nothing to report.
Water Sewer?
I'll say some things, then I'll have Jim elaborate if I don't catch them all, Jim. We met yesterday, and after the meeting, we have submitted all easement documents to the parties involved to secure their easements. Jim has the bid documents ready, but we're waiting for the permits to come back. He has submitted permitting to MDEQ, Jim, and...
Right now, it's still at the county.
Yeah.
Then it goes to MDEQ.
Yeah. So we're at the permitting stage, Jim has the bid specs ready, we have the easements out for our Lakeville water main.
Okay. Is that it?